Define a per diem.
I'm on now.
Is my mic on? It's perfect.
Cut it down.
Yes, sir.
Cut it out.
Alrighty, everybody. Welcome to the Monday, March seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five Cumberland Town Council Budget Meeting, Finance Committee Meeting. Just a couple of quick updates. There were a few questions we received towards the end of our meeting and then also a few emails exchanged that we have added to the website that outlined the questions folks were asking and the answers just for full transparency as we move through the budget process. Those can be found on the CumberlandMaine.com under the Budget Section Fiscal Year Two Thousand and Twenty-Six and then down at the bottom of the page, Q and A. And under there, you'll see all the questions and answers. And we'll keep updating those as we move through the budget process. We will have another meeting on Monday, March twenty-fourth and then subsequently, March thirty-first, April fourteenth and April twenty-eighth. Other than that, we're good to go. Matt, any updates from you? Or we just get started in FIRE?
Thank you, Madam Chair Douglas. Good to see you this evening. And we do have, there's a couple of different items as well that's added that, that Helene can talk about as well in your packet this evening. And part of it is follow-up from last week's Budget Workshop. And it was looking at a ten-year look back between, from wages, from wages and benefits through expenses to go by, looking at by category. That was provided as well tonight and also includes within that the MSAD's allocation and the county allocation. So for each of those years, you can look at the percentage change over that decade of time as well as the comparison between the mill rates that had happened. And then secondly, there's also by department as well for the town that you can look at and for your conversational pleasure and going forward, just to compare and contrast. And then finally, opportunity to look at revenues as well and see where the changes have happened over that decade. The other item that's really, can help understand some of the changes, I guess, when you look at by department, are increases and not to think that we live in a vacuum, but to look at within the operations, where have there been growth? So what's the population change been over that ten-year period of time? As well as what the, the change in employee structure has been over that ten years of time? So that kind of shows you how, you know, where we started at and where we've reflected to or where we are at at this point in time. So that, that may be for future discussions, but it, because it's all, all fresh on your desktop for this evening. But you'll find that, hopefully you'll find that a useful, useful tool in comparison going forward.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
No, thanks, thanks to Helene for that. And it's just great to go in and dig into there and have that. Kind of puts, I think it really helps putting some items into context and you can see where, you know, what the drivers are as well, see how the town did in comparison to other cost centers that, that are outside of the town's control, frankly. So you can, you can look at that as well.
Does anyone have any, go ahead.
A quick question, Matt, looking at the mill rate there and then at the bottom line valuation, is that state adjusted valuation at bottom line?
Local valuation, Councilor.
Local valuation.
Yep.
I always say the mill rate really doesn't mean anything. It's, it's, it's a, it's a valuation based against.
Against expenses.
Your, your expenses and it could vary whether, you know, whether it's state valuation or local valuation.
Yeah, yeah, the state valuation is the driver, obviously, for your, for your school aid as well as allocation for county, county taxes. Those are the two big drivers.
When we try to compare that number to other communities, it's, you know.
Yeah, there's a way to do it. It's called an equalized mill rate. So what you end up doing is you grab all the towns that you want to look at and then you find out what their ratio or their relationship to market value is to their, to their assessments. And then you can, then you take that and you kind of use that to, to adjust the, the tax rate up or down to bring to full value. So let's say if you had a, a mill rate of twenty, but your, but your properties are taxed at fifty percent, your mill rate, your effective mill rate would be ten.
Right.
So that kind of, that kind of gives you an idea. So you can adjust that to give you kind of a general approach, but effective mill rates are kind of what you use to compare community by community.
Pollen was probably the worst offender.
They are pretty good. There's a couple of other ones in there, too. Towns that have like paper mills, for instance, like Rumford, Mexico up there. If you look at Mexico, like for instance, Mexico doesn't have, doesn't have the, the plant Rumford does. Mexico's got like a forty-dollar mill rate and Mexico's got a twenty-dollar mill rate type of thing. Or vice versa, Rumford's got a twenty and Mexico's like forty. So those kinds of things play into it as well. Yep.
Any other questions? Nope? Thanks for pulling that together, Helene.
Sure.
And we can go ahead and get started then with FIRE.
Okay, great. So you just want to go ahead and jump in? I just want to make sure we didn't have any questions in regards to any of the items that we went over last week, which was admin finance through Police Department.
I did have.
Yeah.
There were a few of the technology licenses that weren't explained. I don't know if any of those were found out after the fact. Try to find an example.
It was the ESO solution and EIG constant.
And A three, no, A three was locks and security. Yeah, ESO and EIG.
Still, still working on getting those answers. But I will get those shortly and try to get those posted up with the other remaining questions.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Thorson.
Any other outstanding questions? No? Awesome, then we'll jump right into FIRE.
Yep, so if you go to your packet that I provided you last week, page nine starts FIRE. So just as a reminder of what Town Manager Sturgis said last week, this is one of the departments that had requested an increase, but we went ahead and pulled back only because they just became fully staffed and he'd like to kind of see where the department goes first with that fully staffed version and how effective they become. But overall, the budget adjustments that we've done for two thousand and twenty-six includes truing up the, the actual, the budget from twenty-five to twenty-six for the wage difference between what was originally budgeted versus the contracted amount for their contracted bargaining agreement. And then bringing them up again in twenty-six for what that four percent increase that was included in that bargaining agreement as well. We did some adjustments, had to do a lot of cleanup on the, the benefits and the, the retirement. And again, as a reminder, I put that red line in there, in that, in that, on that printout so that you can see the, the difference, the top portion is your benefits and wages. Below the line is your, all your other operating costs. We also, as far as the operational piece, we have an increase in gasoline due to the new ambulance. So there's an expected increase because of the ambulance they just purchased. As we spoke in the Police Department, the Fire Department also shares the contracted services for the dispatching and that share for them also went increased. The, the building maintenance line, which is your line four thousand, two-two-three-four thousand, that includes the Siemens contract for HVAC for the, the Central and West Fire Stations. And then the other larger increase that we will see from last year is that we have to, had include an increase for training only because the contracted bargaining agreement included some mandatory trainings for their full-time. And they also wanted to incorporate some trainings for their call members.
Bob? Quick question about training. Has there ever been any internal dialogue about a pool for training versus, like required training? And then anything, you know, I think Counselor Thorson had raised a good point last week about, you know, necessity and additional things, right? So has there ever, ever been a conversation about, you know, there are certain trainings we need for necessity and then a pool for training for the remainder of the year that can be applied across all departments? Has there ever been a conversation surrounding that, Matt?
There, there is some for, like for department heads.
Yeah.
That's kind of all, or had been traditionally pooled under the administration side of it. As far as some of the training that they have specific to FIRE, for instance, a lot of that's call, called department training, kind of specific to their area. Same on the PD side, they have some training that's specific to their operation that was put, you know, in the past, might have been carried in the, in the operational budget now on the administration side. And that's been pulled over to the PD side so we can look at that from a cost center to make sure that it's being accurately tracked.
Okay.
But from the department head side of it, like to go to conferences or the different specific training, that's been, a lot of that's been kept in the, in the admin side.
Okay. Okay. Did you have a question?
Yeah, a few. So starting with the, the per diem. How, why did that jump so much? If we were up to, you know, we added two, two positions full-time last year. And then I understand, you know, with the department agreement, rates changed and all that, but it's still going up, you know, by twenty grand, thirty-three percent, just about. Is that, are we expecting a higher call volume? Is it how we're allocating, you know, when we expect, when the full times are going to be on staff? And then when we're expecting to need per diem people? Or like, how does that work out?
What we're looking to do is supplement where, on, when you have shifts that open up, that we can use per diems in, in that opportunity. Instead of looking at funding an additional position or two positions on that, fill that open spot as needed with a per diem person, which is greater than what's currently been, been used. The thought is if we do, it's, it's cheaper to pay, pretty blunt, blunt, I guess, but it's cheaper to pay a per diem rate for that twelve-hour shift than it would be to say a time, time and a half for, you know, if, if you have an open shift, say someone goes on vacation, sick or what have you. By the contract, you go through your list of, of your EMTs, paramedics to fill that shift. And then if they, if they decline to do that, then you could go to a per diem at that point in time. So it's, it's less expensive, but that's kind of the hope there to kind of offset the need for another full, full-time person. So that's why, that's, that's new for this year, so it's increasing that. In the past, they'd use more per diems and then it got to be more challenging once the, once the unit, bargaining unit came on board. It was harder to supplement those with. Chris, I may, I may look to you on that.
The summer months are, they have about thirteen heat pumps.
Yeah.
Which is all electricity covered by the solar field. They do have natural gas, which is their heating for the, for the stations. So I'm not sure why.
You got heat pumps too. So where, where are we getting our heat from? Heat pumps or?
Getting a combination.
A lot of heat pumps up there.
Yeah, it's a combination of natural gas and heat pumps. So there's a, there's a furnace up there that covers the, the open, the public spaces, the meeting rooms, and the heat pumps cover the individual bedrooms, individual offices.
So for, the natural gas in, in twenty-four, in July, I, that's understandable. But October for both the central station and the west station was zero. It's, it's great, but it's like, I'm just trying to figure out.
I have a feeling what happened is they couldn't find those bills, so they couldn't fill in that amount, which is why they're highlighted.
Okay.
And we never went back to review that with them to see where those bills got charged to so they can, so we can fill in those blanks. It doesn't mean that we didn't pay anything.
All right.
Counselor Magoo, on the, on the, the next page, I think, on the heating fuel detail, it shows on the amount billed, that's a bit like the middle, middle page, I guess, on the natural gas west station. It shows the amount billed, but they don't have the therm's used amount there. So I'm not sure. Yeah, as, as Helene said, I think it's, I think it's a question of just not having enough data.
More of a paperwork thing than somehow in October, we're able to not use any heat?
Yeah, it wasn't a free, wasn't a free heating system or heating season.
One more question while we're on that page, or the phone page. Unless anyone's in disagreement with me, I'd really love to explore no longer having fax machines. I just feel like the cost versus what we could figure out for a secure transfer is just, I mean, when you look at what we're compounding across departments, it just seems like we're spending a lot of money on, on faxes. And it, I feel like there's a better, there's got to be a better way.
Honestly, I can give you a breakout between what we're actually using for phones versus faxes, because I don't really think that the expense for phones is in the fax machines.
Yeah.
It's probably more of the voice-over IP that we have across the board and the copper lines that's expensive.
Yeah.
Because when I looked at the GWI bill, we're talking about three hundred and twenty dollars a month for that one.
Yeah.
That's where our expense is. I don't think it's the fax machines, per se.
So just to suss that out a little bit more, like the copper line is a landline, right? That's what that means? So I know there's some technology that allows for like, when you dial the landline, you know, like my desk forwards to my cellphone. Is there a functionality where that, you know, if we're paying for people's cellphones, what is the, is there a different way we can look at how we're arranging that? So we're not, I don't want to say we, we get rid of landlines everywhere, but it just seems like we gotta, you know, when you're paying that year over year and there's so much technology available, we got to find a way to lean into it for cost savings, I feel like.
So can I go into that a little bit more? So your, 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 your different phone lines are for different functions?
Yeah.
So all the desks are on voice-over IP. That's, that's said and done. The cellphones are because we have, those employees are out on the field.
Yeah.
So there's not a way to get in communication with them other than using a cellphone service. So that's either through Verizon or AT&amp;T that we have those services through. Then the third, the, your third piece is your copper lines, which is going to manage your backup to your phone. If there's no internet in the building or any of your municipal building, there's, communication is cut off. Nobody could use the phone. So the Fire Department has a copper line backup phone line as well as it covers the alarm systems and the fire panels, because there's certain things that have to be done through copper line and not through voice-over internet. So those are the, those are going to be your different categories of phone lines. So right now, what we did is we had TPX previously as our voice-over.
Okay.
And that, that one was being expensive, because every time we required some type of adjustment or change to our phone system, they were charging us every single time. And it was an arm and a leg just to even get someone to talk to us, because they were only willing to speak to specific people. So that one, all those lines, and actually Whitney helped through that whole process of getting our whole voice-over from this TPX system over to, to Ion. So the other, the other pieces of what telephone covers, it almost is kind of like, because there is no other way to communicate, communicate outside of the voice-over for it. So people who have cellphones, it's not because they have a desk and an ability to get a cellphone. It's either one or the other.
Okay. All right, that, that makes me feel a little bit better about that. Bob?
I'm not sure I buy, I'm not sure I buy into that. In an event of emergency, we rely on radio communications, right?
Not always.
Not always.
County can reach through the Police Department and Fire Department by radio, correct?
There's a lot of dead spots in this town.
If we don't lose the town.
But I mean, we're not, we're not relying on a landline for, for emergencies.
See, the fire, the fire station, when we built the fire station, the downstairs was designed to be an emergency operations center.
I mean, I have a landline and I have a rotary phone, so I could call you, because I don't need the technology. But if I had a, if I, if I had a touch-tone phone, I wouldn't be able to reach you.
Oh, God.
Right. If the internet was down, you wouldn't be able to. But the landlines, the copper lines are more of a direct line. So we have redundancy at the fire station for the operations center. So we have not only the VoIP system, but the landlines, also the copper lines. We have to have one for an elevator. We have to have them for, if we have fax machines. We can get away from the alarm panels if we upgrade the alarm panels and go to radio waves, which we're probably going to do on a couple of the buildings. We've already converted many of them. But we do have redundancy at the fire station just for that reason. So there are copper lines in there that aren't getting used on a daily basis, but are there in case the whole internet goes down and we need phone contact.
And, and the, and the wireless coverage, you know, the radio coverage, as Counselor Cobb said, there are the same spots that you drop calls in, in this town is the same spots that we, they also have radio outage as well. So town's been working on that, as, as many councilors know, for a few years now, trying to find the right, you know, tower locations so we can get microwave installations, we can get that coverage. Because west side, I mean, on Blanchard Road from about, I don't know, just to the side of Bruce Hill Road to about Skilens, if you're not going forty-five miles an hour, you drop the call. So, so you just plan on that. And then there's, there's other, you know, four sides same. So we're working on trying to find co-location opportunities there for radio coverage to make sure we eliminate those dark zones. So that's a live convo. But yeah, if, if you can't get one, you got to try to do the other. So there's some redundancy there as well, at least on the public, the public safety side.
Can, can you dig in a little bit more on where we are with that?
Sure.
Either, either now or maybe a later bit with, you know, it's annoying for me when I'm on eighty-eight and the call drop, like if I pull onto eighty-eight, it's like, all right, I'm call dropping. It's much more than annoying if it's the Fire Department trying to talk to somebody or the Police Department trying to talk to somebody.
Very much.
Where we are on that. And then sort of connected to that, this might be more a Helene question, but the Verizon phone bills, like they're, it looks like the stock market is just up and down and up and, you know.
Mint Mobile.
It's, it's all over the place with these bills. And I'm just sort of wondering why there's, it's not a, like, all right, your rate is twenty bucks a month or two-hundred or whatever it is. But we've got, you know, eighty-one dollars and thirty-nine cents one month and then seven hundred and six the next.
I could talk about the radio towers first. Just, what we're looking to do is co-locate. I know Chief Ramsey, myself and, and Chief Small have had conversations with, almost since the first, my first month of, of being here now, trying to find a solution. We've been working on a installation over on Chabig for a connection there to work with Yarmouth and Chabig as well to co-locate and do that. We're also looking at opportunities to co-locate on towers. Looking at one tower on top of, at the top of Mountain Road in Falmouth for one. But then there's also a new tower that may, that's, that may be proposed in the near term that we're looking to try to co-locate with them as well. That could open us up, especially on the four side that we're looking at. So we're looking to have that in the near term move forward. We've been looking at different locations. There's Range Way. The town was looking at maybe working with their provider to have them build the tower and the town can lease the land to them. So we've looked at that as an option. But we've been talking with two or three different providers over, over the past six months, if not before then, to try to find places to co-locate and avoid having to, you know, basically build our own tower.
Is any of that in here or is that more like a TIF we could use?
In prior budgets.
Or we've always sort of set aside money for that?
Yeah, there's prior budgets that have funded a lot of it. And there's also been a grant that the town received to help offset the funding for it. So we're just trying to find the best situation, because it's, it's almost looking to triangulate the town. So you have, you know, coming off from, off the Portland Peninsula, you know, the county's got dispatched and their line comes from the Portland Peninsula, shoots up in a line, you know, right, right now, they're looking at shooting at a line towards Chabig and grabbing that tower there and then finding another third and fourth location to kind of triangulate all those signals. So that's been a lot of the effort we've spent, I don't know, a bit of money this past year to work on a new installation at Chabig. So trying to find if that's going to, that's going to at least be one of the data points. So that's, that's been, been in action. But if we find another opportunity, which, we had a conversation last week with one proposal, if that comes forward, that could be a, a huge development. Cost-effective for the town, vastly improved service for us on the radio side, cellular service for folks on the, on the eighty-eight side of it as well. So that could be great. And then if we can get on the, on the west side of town as well, we can get that triangulation going. It, it could really, we'd have no gaps.
So we're, we're hoping closer to months to year-ish? Or are we looking still at like years?
I think you're looking at a year.
Okay.
You know, because one, like the one, one we're looking at would have to have, we'd have to look at doing a potential cellular overlay or actually, no. Let me revise that. Let me revise that. Talk with Bill Longley and, and Bridget. The use is, the use should be okay. Antenna is an allowed use in the zone. So, their attorney thought that it wasn't, but our, our code officer and our planner have, have a different opinion. And I, I, I share their opinion, out of expediency for one, but also because I, I think it's the right call, so. But hopefully, we can get that done within, get, get that done within the year.
Just really quickly, Helene, did you have clarity on the cellphone bills?
Yeah, for the fire department, they also, what they did is, they went from a, um, the concept of using, you know those laptops that the PD have in those, their, their, they have in their, their squad cars? Those are very expensive laptops. And they went, the fire department used to have it set up the same way, where that, that was the way they used, what they used to kept, keep in their vehicles. They went to an iPad model. So, what they end up doing is, as they were rolling through each, um, the end, the end life of the laptop they had in those vehicles, they went to a model where Verizon was, they were purchasing the, the iPad through Verizon to get the service. And they get the iPad at a discount when they do that. So, that's why there's, there's some months in Verizon's bill where you have an increase, because they're going in and buying, purchasing the laptop to go into that vehicle.
Okay. Denise?
Um, kind of an observation and then a question out of it. An example, Public Works is really excellent at very clearly stating where in each item the increases are coming from, but there are pages of, you know, like, a fifteen thousand dollar increase, ten thousand, eighteen, and there's no indication where it's coming from on these pages. So, it would be helpful to have that either between now and the next meeting, or if you know where that is coming from, you can go over it. Like, um, equipment maintenance, for example, seventy-two hundred more. So, not explaining where it's coming from. Um, miscellaneous expenses, up twenty-nine percent, a thousand dollar increase. What is that? I understand, like, the Siemens contract that accounts for most of it. There's still another, like, seven hun, or eight hundred fifty unaccounted for in the increases, maintenance agreements for nine thousand. And then, which area in the training is the increase coming from? So.
Yeah, I'll work with the fire department and get more specifics so that we can get those, those lines more clearly, clearly defined, so they have some rationale behind.
Okay. Thank you.
Those increases.
Tig?
Oh, yeah. I was just curious, on electricity, are they on, is the fire department on the solar field?
Yeah, so, all of those increases or, or flat amounts that we put throughout for electric, it's really so that we can basically pay ourselves for it. So, I take that, those funds and actually move it to our solar field account on that fund. At some point, when we get through this budget, we can do an overview of all of the funds and where those funding levels are as well. We have two pockets. One is for the solar field and the other one is for our streetlights. And so, we try to make sure that we're putting funding in those areas, because if you remember, we purchased our streetlights from CMP. So, we need to make sure that we keep a solid CIP amount of funding set aside so that we have, if we need repairs or updates that need to be done to lighting, we have that set aside and we don't have to worry about spikes in our expenses for those type of charges.
Okay, so for future conversations around the possible extension of the solar field, I guess kind of my question is, are we meeting, is there, is there any building that's not getting those credits? Municipal owned? Because we've, Valhalla is not, right? It is?
Everything is except for senior housing.
Okay. Okay, that's super helpful. Thank you. Ron?
Sorry, I'm here late, and maybe this was brought up. Training is going from eleven, seven to eight to twenty-nine thousand. Why such an increase? I mean, an eighteen thousand dollar jump in training?
I think, Ron, too, this is kind of what I was getting at, was like, what's necessity versus what's extra? Like, I think there's, like, I toe the line, thinking about my job and my operation. Like, it can be used as an employee engagement opportunity, but I also want to be cognizant of the fact that we're not gonna do that on the taxpayers' backs. So, what is necessity? And then, yes, we can have a little bit of a cushion, but it shouldn't be in excess of eighteen thousand dollars. Right? Fair?
Sure. Council Cop, great question. Thanks for that. The, one of the big areas was the EMS license recertification, which is, was part of the CBA, was to put, put in that expense for the department to, to do that. And that was, that's the lion's share of it at eleven, five.
Is that every five years, or is it, I mean, the?
Let me get back to you on that part, but I can't remember what, what the period was on it. Yeah, okay, every two years. So, we should maybe reprieve next year and then?
Just another comment, and I see this every time they go out onto the turnpike for an accident and know whether it's down Tuttle Road and Blanchard Road for a car accident. You're using absorbent pads, you're using speedy dry. I mean, and when I use that stuff, I bill for it when I show up. And if I sweep the road, I get paid for sweeping the road. I get paid for picking up trash. I mean, and I think it's, and I brought this up, Chris, you know I brought this up before. There's certain things that they should be billing for, because it used to be ninety percent of the people had insurance. Now, it's probably fifty percent of the people have insurance. And it's all, they get all of this information. The PD has this information. And it's very simple to bill them for certain goods, I mean, so.
Do you want to talk about that?
Hundred and ten percent agree with Councilor Cop. I believe it's, especially on, when you're on two ninety-five or ninety-five.
Exactly.
It just goes back to, I mean, my, I cut my teeth as a young selectman in New Gloucester with a huge spill from superior carriers on ninety-five. They needed everybody and we billed for it, and that's what you should do.
Just a week ago, I had the oil truck in Brunswick that was rolled over, spilled twenty-six hundred gallons of diesel fuel. My cleanup bill alone was seventeen hundred dollars. Cleanup, Clean Harbor's cleanup bill was in excess of a hundred thousand.
Sure called me, Ron.
I mean, and all I'm using is absorbent pads, the same thing the fire department's using, absorbent pads, manpower, building a dike around it to try to contain the, you know, I mean, it's, it's all, at the end of the year, it adds up.
Yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a live conversation with the chief as well, that's, you know, because you're losing an opportunity. Now, you can, obviously, if you find that someone doesn't have the insurance, it's, it's all part of the business. You can write it off like you would if somebody.
That's what I call my bad debt file.
Yep, exactly, exactly.
I have one of those too, but I mean, but.
Is, is that something, Matt, you guys, I know Helene's gonna dig into some of these line items for Councilor Thorson, but is that something we could circle back on, on our conversation next week on potential next steps for that?
Yeah, it's written down.
Thank you.
Yep, that's great. Thank you.
Andrew?
Bob would have had one first.
Oh, Bob.
I, I got a number of things, items, but to respond to Ronnie's comment, if a contractor, private enterprise is on the job site, on the emergency scene, all cleanup should be shuffled off to them. Fire department is there for emergency, take care of, get the guy to, put the fire out, take the guy to the hospital, pull off the scene, let Public Works and private enterprise take care of the cleanup. And, and let the billing, you know, let's, let's make sure that the job delineation is, is what they're doing. Therefore, emergency, you know, put the fire out, get the people that are, need to be taken to the hospital, that sort of thing. But I, I think we see the, the, the job creep, if you will.
If you, but the manpower expense is there. You can bill for the manpower, or the people power, sorry. But to have personnel to respond from the start of that response till the time that they're finished, you can bill for that.
I don't want them doing Clean Harbor's job.
Oh, and they're not going to.
But when the fire department shows up and you have fuel running out of an oil truck, do you sit there and play cards waiting for Clean Harbor's?
That's a difference.
No, but, but that's what happens, Bob. I mean, they're the first on scene.
I think there's a, you know, you, we can, we know how to run the operation. Let's make sure we do it.
Get there and stabilize the situation, and the, the subsequent act is, that's, that's Clean Harbor's. We're not, we're not configured for that, but we can stop, you know, you can triage the situation, so to speak, and get your people in there and stop it, get, you know, get the debris off the roadway, all that kind of stuff that you're cleaning up. It's all, you know, to get it contained and then move on to the public safety side of it.
A year ago, we had a Walmart truck that ran over a piece of steel on the turnpike. Cumberland PD, uh, Cumberland Fire Department responded to the fuel spill. One of the firemen's clothes got saturated with diesel fuel, so they sent a bill to Walmart. Danny Small did it for two. They got paid for one, which was considerable amount of money. I think it was over two thousand dollars, and Walmart paid it. And that's just a for instance, I mean, so.
Yeah. On the training, that, that jumped right off the pages to me. Falmouth has training every Monday night. If we're not, if we're not combining our efforts in regional training, strike the law, strike the item. Let, let them come back and justify it, but I, I want to see that they're, they were, we're not doing the same thing that Yarmouth and Falmouth are doing. We should be doing the, you know, firefighting, EMT work. It's all the same. Let's make sure that, that, that training dollar is, is spent. So, to back up, just to, just to the, the beginning of this, Andrew talked about the, uh, I just happened to grab this on the way out the door, two thousand and nineteen. In two thousand and nineteen, full-time wages was two hundred and ten thousand dollars, and per diem was two hundred and forty-seven thousand. So, I, it's, we miss a lot by not having a, a bigger spreadsheet, because it's, so, I guess the question to, to be asked is, is our money better spent by having full-time employees or per diem workers? And maybe we can circle around and come back to that. But if I look at the, you know, and if I add the two numbers together, this year, it's, it's, it's seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars, and per diem is, is seventy-eight, so we're, we're eight hundred and somewhat a thousand opposed to, you know, four hundred and forty thousand less than, you know, six, seven years ago. Uh, equipment maintenance, twenty-four thousand dollars to fifty thousand, that, that's, membership dues, I think we need to look at that. You know, we don't have to belong to every firefighting organization across the country. It's, I, I just don't think it's necessary. It's four thousand dollars. It could be bet, better put to other uses. Building maintenance, up and down, up and down there. Maintenance agreements, again, building maintenance, maintenance agreements, those things are, so, you know, we're, we're substantially spending more money than, you know, a million five, and, and less than seven years ago, it was, it was less than half of that.
Bob, I'm gonna give you some homework.
Pardon?
I'm gonna give you some homework. So, next week, we're gonna circle back on this conversation, because they're gonna bring some itemized, more expanded out, itemized. And coming off of our budget meeting last time, you know, Helene and Matt had given us the advisement that changing by a total dollar amount would be helpful. So, I think instead of striking itemized things, it would be helpful to say, let's shift this budget and get it closer to ten percent. And however you want to do that is up to you.
I do want to point out some, some things that I, I think that we, there's room to, to, to look at.
Okay.
Vacation coverage, how are we paying for that? Can we provide that, those hours with per diem?
Per the contract, you have to give the opportunity to your full-time employees first before you give it out to per diem.
And, and that's where, and that's coming back to looking at the original question about per diems as well. If, in the contract, it says if, you know, if, you know, if EMTA goes off, books off for vacation day, then that, that shift gets, has to be offered to a member of the unit first. And then, from there, you can go to, you can backfill with per diems. So, that's kind of why we're looking at, at that, because oftentimes, you know, instead of forcing, which pays time and a half, you can give somebody a straight time opportunity. If they decide that they don't want to take that opportunity, then you can use a per diem and use, and, and use that as your labor.
Andy?
Uh, so, and I know that we want to try to walk a fine line between, you know, knowing what's going on in the budget and then also not getting into too much of a nitty-gritty bit. But, um, like, cable and internet, the internet looks like it's doubled this year. You know, it was one fifty-nine for a while, and then, I'm assuming spectrum bumped up to three, almost three thirty. And it's like, are there other options? Or, you know, that seems, I mean, spectrum is spectrum, but that's a lot of an increase.
I think it was increasing the, the service performance before. I think it was, I can't recall exactly, but it was very low performing on the download and the upload type of approach. So, I think it's got closer to what, and, and, and it went up for one, but the service was improved at the station, and that was the larger driver.
Can we call them up and tell them we're canceling, and then they'll give us, you know, the next six months for a reduced rate?
Always have that option. Yeah, we can, we can find it.
Get on it.
I wasn't done.
Sorry, Bob.
We're going back and forth.
Yeah, I know. So, the maintenance agreement details, there's, there's, you know, and again, I'm not, I'm not trying to tell you where to cut or add or, you know, because I don't want to drill down that deep into the budget. But I do, I'm gonna just bring out some items here that I think, kind of, hose testing. It's something we did ourselves in the service. I don't know why they're not doing. Heat condenser cleaning, twenty-seven hundred dollars. Why isn't Siemens doing that as part of their contract agreement? Cardiac monitors, would we be better off leasing our AEDs rather than buying them? Because the, the cost of, of testing these, or, and, and I look at the battery cost, it's pretty significant. Vehicle exhaust system, I mean, you should be doing that, checking the exhaust, right? That's a part of an inspection, vehicle inspection?
On what kind of vehicle?
It's exhaust. Does it matter?
There's no, there's no emissions test for diesel.
Well, I don't think they're testing for emissions. I think they're just testing for leakage.
I think it's, it's the Primal vent. It's the, it's the units that connect to the exhaust pipes inside the fire station.
Oh, yeah.
So, when you start the vehicle, it exhausts the fumes, so it doesn't exhaust in the building.
It's a connection to the building.
Yeah, most automotive garages have those things.
No.
These are automatic.
No, automotive garages have these.
The dealership doesn't have those?
No. This hooks on over the tailpipe, Bob, and when they, it has a breakaway thing, so when they drive off, it has an AS thing on it, and it breaks, it releases, and you drive out the building without it. It's so when they start the vehicle, it doesn't fill the building with fumes. Which is probably mandated by the state that they have to have them, so.
License recertification, eleven, five.
Don't want people to be licensed?
Well, not that. I'm just wondering why it costs so much to have a license recertification? Why, why that cost is so high?
That, that was the, per the contract, so it's a bi, bi-annual renewal on the EMS license requirement?
You pay that to the state, or is that, where's that money go?
That would be for the, for the training class that they would have. So, you'd have to, you know, pay whoever does the training. It could be the state main EMS, or I'm not sure who ends up doing it, but that's what the annual cost is.
So, this is in license recertification. This is, this is cost work.
Yep, yep.
One other question. The advanced EMT class, if we're paying for that, that's not a license, but if we're paying for that, does that push someone's pay grade up?
It does. The, A, like, the advanced definitely gets more than the basic EMT. It's in our best interest to have.
Yeah.
Actually, there's, the two who are, do not have the, do not have the advanced, need to get to a, need to get to that advanced within a period of time after their date of hire.
Okay.
So, it's two of our newest hires to get them up to, because that, there's a certain, there's a higher level of care that they can provide versus a basic.
And my, my final comment is, is again, this, this the two thousand, twenty nineteen, and the department was a part-time chief, a full-time paramedic, two full-time paramedics. Anyways, I, I question our staffing, why we need a, someone in the office. We have a full-time chief and a full-time assistant chief. Maybe we can look at that, too.
Happy to review that, sir.
That's it?
It might be, it just seems like there's some stuff that we want to dig back at. So, it might make sense, if anyone has any outstanding questions, that we put them out there now, and then we move on to the next cost center, just for the most effective use of time, unless someone feels differently. use of time, unless someone feels differently. I just don't want to continue to dig in if there's a lot of kind of like outstanding factors that might impact our decision-making and/or further questions. Do you agree, Helene?
Absolutely agree. I think maybe it would be best if, if all the counselors can send you their questions and then you can forward that to Matt and I once you get, you know, are able to like...
Consolidate.
Consolidate, if you don't mind.
You got it. Thank you for your feedback, though, guys. That's super helpful. Definitely want to make sure that we're being conscious of the fact that we're leading under the impression that everyone is putting their best foot forward. So I don't want there to be a contentious factor to this. All right, moving on to the next cost center, which will be...
Public Works.
Public Works.
Actually, it's code enforcement.
Okay.
It's 240, page 10.
Perfect.
This department makes up our full-time code enforcement officer, a part-time electrician inspector, and then our fire chief, who is our alternate building inspector for us. So what we have here mostly of the increases and adjustments is towards salaries and benefits, just to kind of clean that up. One of the things, too, just wanted to point it out is like second line to the, from the bottom, we added back in a line called capital outlay. So what happened previously was our, our code enforcement officer used to receive a travel stipend and then was requested a vehicle. So what we would like to do is start including what would have been his travel stipend and include it as part of moving that, those funds towards a CIP so that we can start looking at making sure that there's always capital funds available to make sure that he has a proper operating vehicle in the future. So this is to bring this back in so we can do that.
I believe we replaced his car last year, right? So what would be the long-term, one to five-years replacement?
Yeah, well, he has a used vehicle right now.
Yeah, he's driving an old police cruiser.
Oh, I thought we bought him a truck last year.
That was Bill Longley.
Oh.
No.
Wow.
It was, it was, it was under discussion with Mr. Longley and, and Mr. Shane. And then I believe it hit the cutting room floor last year as the result of...
I thought I vaguely remember that.
The patrol officer's got a pickup, Bill Longley's got a...
Tahoe.
It's like an old Tahoe, yeah.
Well, I thought, was it a Ford?
No, it's Chevy, yeah.
Okay, all right, that's good to know. Great.
Do we still have the two electric Hyundai's?
No, gone. Those are gone. Yeah, hooked them.
Bill didn't like me going to pick him up.
They have their challenges.
We're making the fuel anyway.
One other thing to flag for this, which we were just chatting about with, with Matt, was just talking about permits and fees moving into the next year. So that's something, Matt, I don't know if we feel comfortable circling back on that next week, just bringing, we can still move through this, but just something worth a discussion or would that not fall within this?
I think that, I think that'd be great. I know we're looking at this year, if you want me to keep a high level, the biggest change you'll see obviously is in building permits. And we've had some approvals that have taken place through the planning board process. And they are, you know, for instance, Mineral Springs over, off Blackstrap Road, they've already, they've already pulled eight different permits for that, that development. So they're getting, moving forward. And then there's additional other new approvals that have taken place over the past few months that'll be coming on board. And we'll see, we anticipate that building permit activity will increase over the current year. So we're encouraged by that. And then looking at electrical permits, we're looking at that pretty much to hold, hold constant from where we're at. But then impact fees, as there is going to be newer construction that will be coming on board, we're looking at that also to increase year over year. Plumbing permits, we're looking to basically stay at about, at about the same amount as well, a little bit less.
So how does that work in the sense of we expect more, a lot more building permits? But, so there's going to be more building, but the same amount of electrical permits and the same amount of plumbing? So are people just building things with less electrical inspection needs and fewer bathrooms and sinks and all? Or like...
More, more stable amount of bathroom fixture, you know, bathroom fixtures or electrical permit fees based on the number of fixtures that they have within there. Those stay pretty constant. There's usually not a lot of great fluctuation. It's the, it's the building permit number that, you know, as the cost of construction increases and it's based on the percentage of what the cost for that construction is. So if you look at construction price, materials price is getting higher, labor price is getting higher this year, that's going to also push, and quite honestly, the, looking at the permit fees or the, sorry, the anticipated value of the new construction as it comes on board is driving a good portion of that. So you're, you know, that, if a house is going to come in, it's going to be $600,000. It's going to generate more revenue than a house that, you know, this past year was, say, $500,000. So part of that will drive it as well.
So we think building is going to stay, the physical number is going to stay roughly the same. It's more of a value thing that we think is going to change.
Little bit more volume as far as permit numbers, but the value itself is greater. So a little bit combination of the both together. But it's also tracking back closer to where it was two years ago versus, versus the most, versus last year.
How do you determine the value? If I come in with a 2,500 square foot new home for a building plan with three bathrooms and I have two, two sets of plans, one could be a million five and the other one could be $750,000. And it could all be based on what you put into the house, you know? One could have a solid closed cell insulation, you know, top-of-the-line finishes, and the other one could be fiberglass. But I'm guessing that the cost of the permit should be the same.
No, should not.
So how do, how do you...
If the contractor comes in, you know, you're hoping that they're going to, well, they, they do, they generally lie by about 15 to 20%, but, but ultimately, you know, you anticipate, I mean, you can look at that and say, okay, I'm looking at the finish number. I mean, I've looked at that for 30 years and found that, you know, some are going to be pretty close, you know, pretty good versus others who are going to try to shave, you know, basically shave every...
The real deal is the assessment at the finish, you know, at the finish line.
Yeah, I mean, if you had a question in the past, like when I was an assessor, the code officer would come to me and say, hey, I got this, you know, will you take a look at these plans? This guy said he can build this, you know, let's say a 4,500 square foot house for $200,000. And you'd price it out and say, okay, you know, that's really actually $400,000. And you go back to the contractor and say, you need to, you need to correct, correct this because we're not going to issue this permit until you come correct with an actual number that's, that's reasonable and accurate.
Some towns don't ask.
Some towns don't, but oftentimes it comes down to the judgment. I think I'd put my horses in Bill Longley's barn on that one. If someone was looking to be a little silly with that, I think they'd, he'd correct him pretty quick.
My father's in the process of building a new house on Bruce Hill Road and Range Road, and he decided that he should finish the basement. So he got hit with the second impact fee, which he was unaware of, but paid it. So just to your point, you know, that the more they build, the more it costs. I mean, so...
Most people are actually pretty, pretty decent and pretty honest about that, I found.
Other than the builders, I mean...
Builders, you gotta watch the builders. You do gotta watch the builders, certain ones.
I'm always protecting my customers.
Yeah, from yourself. Andrew?
So on the training line, you know, no change proposed at all, but in the explanation it says in 2019, Bill Longley was state certified until 2025. Does that mean that, is this $400 in proposed training to get him recertified? Or does he need to be recertified, which is another cost that's not in here?
Oftentimes, that'll be different classes he'll take over the, over the course of the year. For instance, I think he's going to, he'll grab some annual training at different, like main building officials. They do some quarterly trainings as well. So he'll still do that. He did, but he does have a recertification window that he has to show every five years or so that he had done X, Y, and Z courses to maintain the certifications in.
So is that, is the recert, I guess the question is, is the recert an added cost? Or is the recert just saying, hey, like, here's my proof that I've done this training over the last, you know, X amount of time and we've already budgeted that in and...
More like that, like annually, he'll, he'll do that training and he'll keep that record. And then five years come by and then he can say, well, I took, you know, life safety or heating or, you know, insulation certifications, electrical certification, things along those lines, I took it at this period of time. So he can have all that. So he doesn't have to take all certain elements every year. And sometimes they're not offered. So as he grabs them, as they come by over that time period, he'll then say, he'll keep, basically he'll keep his books and his records to say, my certification for this was met at this point in time. Then he can provide that all to the state when he gets his new recert done.
So he doesn't need to pay the state another $200 to get the newspaper?
No, not at that time.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure that Bill Longley should be teaching the courses since he's a code enforcement officer of the year. That would be a good revenue generator for us.
Yeah.
Doesn't he get a waiver?
No, no lifetime waiver.
Okay.
Bill is one of the best.
Any further questions on this section? Nope. If not, we'll move on to Harbor Master 250.
So Harbor Master is the cost of a officer who takes that additional responsibility. So that's why when you look here in this, this cost center, you see only overtime wages being budgeted. One of the changes that were done here is that we, there was a slight decrease in the cost for the contracted services. So that was adjusted for that. But also, again, here, there was conversation with the, with what's going on with the harbor, all the equipment we have there. So we, we created a, again, a capital line. There was a recommendation to start saving up for repair maintenance. So you'll see a line in there for $4,000. Again, we'll take that money, set it aside on a capital, in a capital improvement fund and save it there so that we don't have these highs and low fluctuations for repairs and maintenance.
Go ahead. Sorry, Helene, just on that, is that for the master float plan or is that? I know that we're, I don't even know where we are in our float plan, but...
It'll be for cans and nuns.
Oh, okay, so...
Different items that you have for the channel markers and other capital expenses that you'll have for aids, aids to navigation that we have as part of the program as well.
Have we put anything aside for the master float plan project?
There's some funds that were set aside, I think, three years ago.
Capital improvement.
Yeah, I think so.
I know we applied for the grant back...
Yeah, we applied for the grant last fall and still waiting to hear when that, you know, when we're going to have that awarded to us.
Is that a federal program?
Yeah, yeah, that's for the float program.
Yeah.
I think the fun conversation, the way that ended was that we were, we had the option to take action at a later date. Like we could still apply for the fund but didn't need to, or for the grant but didn't need to commit to the funds.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. But we didn't, no, sure, but all right, I know it's a very large expense, so I just wanted to know what we had put aside...
Yeah.
In anticipation of...
I don't think anything.
Anticipate that it would be, not be for this year's budget, but for '27 is kind of where, where you should see that probably pop up. There's funds we can probably do at the, like with an end-of-year transfer if you wanted, you know, if we found out, let's say in the short near term, we, that we were going to get it for '27.
Yep.
We could probably look at that and say, like try to find an end-of-year transfer and set aside half of it. I think it was, I think it was...
It was like $12,000.
Yeah, I think it was, I think it was 12 or up to 25 tops, I think is where we were at.
And is everything still with Army Corps or do we not know? We should get a...
No, it's with the state application program. Yep, the Army Corps and all that work's been, has been done.
Been done, okay.
That I would love to have a conversation. I know I mentioned it, I think to Tig and Matt, about the selling of the planks for like a community initiative. I know, remember the Falmouth Mass program that I had found where you essentially sell the planks to raise money to pay for the float? So it's not necessarily a taxpayer, like, you know, it can be an additional fundraising opportunity. So I don't know if that's something, it would be good to get a status update so that we can understand where it is and if that's something we can work together to try to figure out what next steps might be. Go ahead.
I have a question about looking at the expenses and the capital expenses, which capital expenses includes the channel marker repair replacement. They're talking about mooring removal as well. I see that in the revenues, the mooring fees are budgeted to increase $5,500. Are we increasing those as time goes on to cover increases in fees associated with these expenses?
So the plan, so the plan is for the chief to go forward with looking at, speaking to, what's the company that uses, does our harbor, to do an increase so that way our, our, our fees cover our increase in costs? Because right now, our fee collection of revenues is about $20,000. So we're looking at increasing those fees to about 5% so that we can make sure that we have, start making sure we cover the costs of this department.
On that same line of thinking with the shellfish seeding, A, I'm just curious like what that actually entails. And B, you know, it's down here for the capital line of 2,500 and then we're expecting shellfish licenses, commercial licenses for 1,500.
It's a, it's an opportunity, from the... Yeah, Coastal Waters Committee had been working, thank you, had been working on a way to try to build back the, the shellfish population down there, basically clams, and to do a seeding program. Let's try to do that this year, the next year, and the year after to try to get a foothold for clams. Because at one point, it was a decent clam bed. Over time, it got depleted to the point that they weren't there anymore. So this is an opportunity to try to reinvigorate that as a, as a resource for the community. And so that was, that was what their recommendation was. So they're trying to do that over, I think it's a three, maybe four-year window to try to do that, reestablish that, that population and then hope that eventually it'll turn back into a vibrant shellfish.
So the 25, we should expect the 2,500 to sort of, you know, the next few, two or three years maybe see that. And then after that, that should go away?
It should go away.
With, you know, because it's established and then we have the revenue coming in and then just the general, you know, restoration of the habitat.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. And that's, that's kind of the plan. And, you know, it's reasonable money to maybe create a resource that could be well-established for the community going forward and then may eventually show in the long, you know, in the long run, maybe provide a greater source of revenue, but also an opportunity for folks in town to, to have a clam flat. And again...
Bob wants to start an oyster farm down there.
Who does?
Bob does.
Being an oyster rancher.
Happy to meet. Someone already has an LPA there.
It's pretty, it's pretty amazing.
Yeah.
They have proliferated all along the coast.
Oh, it's unbelievable. You get a brown whisk cast setting up that area.
Red sea's right down here.
Real monies in kelp farming. All right. All right, any further questions on moorings or on Harbor Master?
Next department's animal control. So this is a position that we actually share with Yarmouth and North Yarmouth. So right now, we have incorporated a plan to actually bring up the cost or the wages for this ACO so that we can maintain competitiveness. So it's a little bit slightly higher than your 4% increase. But what will happen is Yarmouth and North Yarmouth will share in that cost. So right now, what we have is Yarmouth taking 35%. So what we do is, the only cost that's really relative only to Cumberland would be the cost for the animal shelters. So when we remove that cost, 35% of what's remaining in that budget is a cost to Yarmouth and 26% is to North Yarmouth. So then we have the remaining cost of $48,991 to include the cost with the shelter in it. So the only other adjustment really to this is we made a increase slightly on some of these... other adjustment really to this is we made a increase slightly on some of these costs, again, because they're shared costs. And then on the capital outlay, we realized that the vehicle, we were, we were putting away the $7,000 for the ACO's vehicle. In this last review, we realized that there's a depreciation in the value of the vehicle that he needs to be in. So we want to make sure we kept it up to market. So there was that increase that we did for that capital outlay.
So first thing, because we're on the topic of telephones a lot tonight. So why is the code enforcement or the animal control officer's cell phone bill $60-something dollars? And then the fire station's cell phone bill is not that. $61.79. And then looking at the fire department.
Again, with the fire department, they also have the iPad service. So you can't, I'm not quite sure if there's an apples-to-apples comparison there, but.
Yeah.
It's not just cell phones in the fire department.
Okay.
But the, yeah, the $61.79 looks like what the, the government contract number is. That's what, if that's Verizon, that's generally what oftentimes their, their monthly rate is.
We have the opportunity to buy or contract for a set number of phones at a set price? Or is it, we pay every phone?
Usually it's by, by the line.
By the line.
Yep, by the line. And then, you know, it's kind of, I can only speak to what my experience has been with Verizon, but oftentimes they would, you know, you could get last year's phone for a very reasonable price, and then you would pay whatever the public safety or public service amount was. So I had a grandfather one for 50 bucks a month for forever. And then they sobered up one day and said it was going to be, I think, went to like 65 bucks at that point in time. So that's, that, that seems like that's kind of at market for what, you know, for a full, for a full plan. But generally, they, you know, they do it on the, on the per-line basis versus, say, the, whatever, 110 bucks a month it would be to have a, a full data plan, phone, and so on and so forth for an individual. It's close to about half, half the cost usually. Then if you add something on, like, like, like Helene said, if they add on, like, a hotspot or a, or an iPad or something like that as well, all of a sudden it starts, you know, it jumps up a little bit more in value-added type of thing, honestly.
Cost added.
Yep.
Yep, yep.
But in theory, you would see the cost savings in other technology, right? Because you're no longer using whatever equipment they were using prior, you know? Like, if they were using the computers in, in the instance of the fire department, we're not, no longer paying for that. We bought an iPad and we're using that service versus the other. So it's like a swap-out.
Right, right.
Yeah, iPad versus, say, a tough book is probably 25% of the cost, I would imagine. iPads are a lot less expensive. Those Panasonic tough books are pricey. And if it's, if you're, if you're, you know, if you're overpowering, you know, if you're using a unit that's hyperpowered over what the need is, then, you know, it's, it's too much horsepower for what you need.
So hopefully, a quick non-phone-related question. We're estimating the cost of gas at $3.50 a gallon in here for the ACO. And for the police department, we're estimating it at $3.25. Do we have different gas that we use for the police department than we do for the ACO?
No, they must have missed that.
Okay.
That's an error.
Yeah. Chris, Chris figures out what the cost is across the town and gives everybody the rate to use. So this must have gotten missed. So we can adjust that.
Do we know which one we're estimating? The $3.25 or the $3.50?
$25.
Yeah, $3.25.
Then, I, I don't know how to say this.
I know what you're going to say. I feel it.
Let it, let it come right out.
Exactly. I.
I know what you're going to say.
I appreciate that we're paying people what we need to, to get quality people. I just have a worry about the, looking at other towns and then finding the average and giving a little bit more than the average, because that just has a chance to snowball if everybody else is doing that. Because now we've just pushed that average up a little bit. Other towns look, incorporate our number, they give a little bit more, that pushes the averages up a little bit, and it just.
It's called circling the drain.
Yeah, that can get dangerous over time. And I don't know the, the best way to, you know, because you pegged to the marketplace to, to get somebody. But I just want to highlight that as something that we need to be aware of.
I don't disagree. Go ahead.
I do know that at one point, we, we didn't have coverage for an ACO for quite some while, and there was quite a lot of turnover. I also know that at one point, the town manager in North Yarmouth got a phone call to come wrangle a horse because there was no ACO or anyone available. I don't know if she actually went. And Matt might be really, really good at wrangling horses. I'm not totally sure.
There we go.
But I, I do think part of it is maybe possibly keeping someone stable, because we've gone through, what, three ACOs in the last two years? Is that right?
Yeah, it's, it's like, how do we do that? You know, we had a rabbit raccoon two years ago, year and a half ago, or something like that, that Naver and I, like, found a stick and sort of like watched until somebody could come in and unfortunately took care of it. But just, this was sort of the, the highlighted bit where, you know, we're looking at the averages and we're a little bit above average. Like, great, like, we should be. But if everybody's trying to go a little bit above average.
I think that's why we need to be talking about regionalization and trying to get ahead of those things. Because I, I think, you know, if we're competing, competing for the same police department employees, same fire department employees, same, you know, EMS, if we regionalize, I think there's, there's opportunity for us to get out in front of that.
Keep plugging away.
If I could jump in on that, we, in a sense, we are regionalized because we're providing the service for North Yarmouth and Yarmouth. I know Gray, sorry, New Gloucester approached me to see if we would find a way to add them to our stable. And I, I encouraged them to talk to the town of Gray because we historically had, combined for an ACO, we had Heather Finney for forever over there. And then they've gone, they've gone through a, a cast of thousands since, if they've been able to get somebody to fill a position. So got a good, got a good ACO with Officer Dark. Does a great job. You want to keep him as best as you can. Because, yeah, if you notice, there's a pretty good variety on that, on that cost. And some towns are better. We had a challenge in, when I was in Cape, we contracted with, we contracted with South Portland. And we had, you know, a non-performing position for a long time. And now they have a great person that does it, and everyone's happy. But when you have a good one, oftentimes you're going to find you're going to regionalize, just because it's, it's, it really lends to it. I remember, you know, I think Bill and I, Bill Shane and I both had the conversation as we were out of pocket at the same time on an ACO, similar to general assistance side of it, we tried to put the bite on County Manager Gailey to say, the county needs to get into this business too now. And it's just a question of finding people who want to be an animal control officer. So if you find one, naturally, you can, you can expand that market. And that's, that's what we've done here is, you know, we've got three, three good-sized towns and one person that responds well. And they seem to be happy with this response, with this response time and service. So that's, yeah, in a sense, the market's kind of done that in a smaller way. And if we could, you know, if we could be part of the larger solution, it'd be great. But right now, I think we really have, in, in many ways, regionalized because it is one of those positions that, that lends well to that. Similar to general assistance, ACO does a great job there. But they need to have a response time. You couldn't, you know, we couldn't work with Denmark and Bridston and have an ACO doing that because he, by the time you're halfway there, the animal's gone, gone on their way. So, but in a sense, we have, we have regionalized already.
Ron, I think you had a question?
No, I'm all set.
You're all set.
With, with the regionalization talk, Helene, you were saying that most of the expenses are split except for the shelter. And then is that also with the capital outlay?
Yes.
That, that is split or that's?
Yes. Everything except the shelter cost is what's included in the, the budget that we present to Yarmouth and North Yarmouth.
Okay. So we're not, I mean, it, it's just remembering that when we look at the 90, 9100 or so for the vehicle outlay, that that's split with them as well. Okay.
And Council McGee, the, the shelter expense is, is allocated by population. That's how they send, that's how they bill it, to each, each of the towns that that, that that shelter serves. So they, you know, they, they figure out, well, there's 8,500 people and it's $1.10 per person or something like that. And that's how they kind of figure out what your, what your cost allocation is to, to contribute towards that, the shelter services.
If you look at the last page in your binder, it shows the, how we break out the budget for Yarmouth and North Yarmouth, and what costs are included when we propose that budget to them.
Great. Thank you.
I just have one.
Go ahead, Bob.
The last item there, at the bottom of the page there, training membership dues. I don't have a problem spending money on training, but I do have a problem spending our money on membership dues. And so I hope there's a lot more training in that $1,000 than there is in membership dues.
I think that's a safe assumption, Council Val. I think, I think the membership dues is probably, you know, a fraction of it. I think it's mostly training.
Do you have a sense of overall call volume for the animal control officer throughout the year?
We can get that for you, Council Douglas.
I think it would be an interesting exercise. While I am always employee-focused as it relates to wages, I would just be curious to understand for a town like South Portland, whose rate is 27.65, what the call volume is and how many employees they have. I think it just could be another column worth exploring to try to understand rates as we go forward year over year.
I think, I know they have, they have one.
Yeah.
And, yeah, and it's, yeah, and it's between South Portland and Cape is where they do that. So the volume, you know, it can, it has its ups and downs, I guess, depending upon the season.
Feels to deal with two.
Oh, that's like a real call. Yeah, okay.
We, we, we'll get the, we'll get the call volume and get that back to the council.
They're next.
Any other questions on this cost center? Not, we'll move on to 310 Public Works.
Okay, as Mr. Sturgis had mentioned in the previous meeting, this was also a cost center had requested originally an additional position, but we held back from that since there's currently three vacancies, three vacancies in the department. But, so what we did is we made sure that we updated our salary and benefits to what we believe where we should, should be accounting for. The, also, some of the other things that I just wanted to point it out about Public Works, they took over all of the state roads except Route 1 and Route 100. So they have largely taken on an additional responsibility in that department. One of their largest increases is going to be your road salt. But again, Chris Bolduc, he, what he tries to do, he does a, base it on a three-year average of the ton, tonnage, and then, you know, incorporates the new price on that. So that's where you see that increase there on the road salt. There was an increase on equipment maintenance, and they were adding the crane inspection and generator maintenance to that cost. We also, if you see, there's an increase for coal patch, the same thing. There's a new pricing per ton on that three-year average. And then an increase on our contracted services, which is our snow plowing. And that's based on the increase in the contract rate for that one as well.
Go ahead, Bob.
Why did health insurance go down?
So from year to year, you know, depending on your employees, you know, it's a percentage of whatever the, the employee chooses. So, you know, if he had a vacancy last year and we budgeted it based on a family, someone taking a family plan, and then the employee comes in and only takes a employee-only plan, there's going to be adjustment that needs to be made to it. So we try to true up those costs from year to year based on the current scenario of employees that he has on, on staff at that time.
I think I asked this. Where do we get our health insurance from?
It's, it's.
Harvard Pilgrim.
Harvard Pilgrim.
And is that a year-to-year contract, a three-year contract?
Year-to-year, sir. So right now, we're waiting from our agent to let us know what they're deciding to come back with, whether it's a, you know, and I believe Town Manager Sturgis spoke a little bit about this last week. So we're kind of waiting to see whether or not, what that renewal is going to be. Our utilization loss, loss ratio has significantly went down. So we're very hopeful. We budgeted 3% before we got that news. So we're, we're budgeting at a very conservative increase, expected increase. We're expecting, hopefully, zero, or we might decide if there is an increase that it might be best to go out to bid.
This might be for Chris. I remember we went from, like, are, are we still using that, like, molasses salt?
Yeah, it's a, it's a brine that we mix with the salt. And it is from a molasses brine.
So is that what account, so FY 2023, we spent $138,579, and you've really slashed, I mean, that cost has come down significantly? Is that because of that solution? Or is it, because I thought I remembered it being cheaper, but maybe it's not.
We're not using as, we weren't using as much salt, and we can use it at lower temperatures. And that's what it was for. But these winters, it's really a guessing game. You know, what's the winter going to be like? If it's all snow, we're not using a lot of salt. But if it's all ice and like we've had this winter, then it goes up significantly. So I, I think this brine is actually, we're not putting as much out. We've calibrated all the trucks, so we're not as much salt as going out.
Right.
Because this, this brine is helping us, it works better. So.
It's also less wear and tear in the truck.
I mean, you, if you look at the, the FY 2023 road salt cost, and then also the mailbox repair, that probably, like, tells a little bit of a story about what kind of winter it was, because they're both pretty high. Do we get our salt from a COOP?
Yeah, we get it through, we go through GP COOP.
GP COOP, okay. Sorry, I think Ron was, had a question first, Bob.
Just a question for Chris, and I think I know the answer. Iron and steel, I assume, is cutting edges for the plows.
Yes.
And then vehicle parts, that wouldn't fall under the same thing. That's what I'm getting at. I mean, vehicle parts is 100, there's no change. I'm just curious. I mean.
Vehicle parts is all the vehicles, the police cruisers.
Oh, okay.
And then we bill individual departments. And then vehicle parts is rarely engine work on the trucks and.
And just so you know, I mean, just the cutting edge on my plow on my pickup is $1,000 now. So you think about the big trucks and what they cost. I mean, it's very expensive. So they make carbide ones now, which cost twice as much as a regular one, but they last three times as long, and they're more money. So.
Cardboard?
No, carbide. I wish they could make them out of cardboard.
I hear you say cardboard plows. It's very impressive.
Ron, I believe a lot of what you say, but I just didn't track. Bob Vale.
I had three other items. Internet access, that's a substantial jump from 2023, $880, $1,800. Uniforms and clothing from $900 to $8,000. And then striping of crosswalks, it's from $24,000 to, you know, $50,000. Can we do our own striping in the house? Or should we contemplate that?
Can we jump back to your first question?
Yes.
Internet. So we'll start there.
Sure.
Cool. Internet. I just want to make sure we get through all your items. Okay. Internet.
That was an increase.
Uniforms.
Some of the crosswalks, they had to do twice.
That was an increase due to the monthly, monthly rate, Council Douglas, on the internet. Again, and it was expanding the upload and download speeds. So if they wanted to search out. So if they wanted to search out a part, for instance, versus, I think they were like fifteen up, fifteen, fifteen up, fifty down type of thing, where they went to increase their speeds to, and I'm out of my depth a little bit on this, just because I know I, I got mine in, mine through a telco at my house, and it went from really slow to, and buffering all the time, to like, I don't know, it was a hundred up and a hundred down or some kind of thing like that. So similar, what we have here is that the speed has increased, and, and that was part of what they're charging us now for the new rate.
Can we just double check that?
Yep, we can, we can look at that and see if there's more competitive rates on it, too.
And then, Bob, your question was on uniforms?
Yes, you know, it's nine hundred and fifteen to eight, eighty-five hundred dollars. That's, what kind of uniforms are we buying?
Dress blues.
Dress blues.
Yeah, I don't know what happened that year, because that doesn't make sense. Because we provide, through the contract, we provide two hundred and fifty dollars a person for boots.
Let me go back and look at the two thousand nineteen here, if I can.
I've got an eighteen-year-old one of those home if you want it.
We're really looking to stir the pot, Ron. Back in twenty.
Do the math.
Two thousand five.
So twenty nineteen was twenty-four hundred dollars. Twenty twenty-two had jumped to seventy-six hundred dollars. I mean, it's, again, we're.
If I remember, I think that might be back when we split parks and recreation.
Well, some of it is, it get moved over to parks. But also, if you go back even further, we used to provide uniform service for them, and it got, it was around fifteen thousand dollars. And we ended up going to giving them a stipend and buying clothes on our own rather than going from a uniform service. So this is really coats, boots, shirts, helmets.
Not to ask a leading question, but, you know, Story Brothers, Grover, those guys don't have uniforms. What are, what are most contracting services? Explain to me the necessity of a uniform.
That's uni, I mean, it's really, we're, we're working in the public. And we really, I don't want someone wearing their Budweiser T-shirt, mowing lawns over at Twinbrooks. So I want them in a Parks and Recreation shirt. I want them in uniform pants that don't have holes in them. I want their boots to be new, so they don't have holes in them, and they're safe. But it's really for professionalism.
And it's mandated that they wear fluorescent clothing if they work beside the road?
Do we have any sort of deal for work boots? Like any company discount through, like, do you guys have a recommended shoe brand that we've worked to get some sort of discount through?
We do, we have them through like Red Wing and and different boot companies like that. They're very expensive. Some of the guys like the ones they get from off of Amazon, and they're ordering them from Amazon, because they like the style. I really leave that up to them. This is their allowance, and this is all you get. So if you want to spend four hundred dollars for boots, or, or two fifty, that's, that's up to them.
Okay, just curious.
A few. One is just more of a curiosity, and I, I like the trend. But the diesel fuel is just, the usage is just going down and down and down. Is that just more efficient vehicles, or we're not having to drive as much, or?
They are more efficient vehicles. And it is also winter-driven. So it's, the big trucks is mostly the diesel fuel. So if we have a tough winter, we're going through a lot of diesel fuel. If we have a light winter, we're not going through as much. So that's why I try to do a four-year average. And then I do a four-year average, three to four-year average on the price of the fuel as well.
And then with the drainage repair, you know, in the actual, in twenty-three was just over six thousand, and twenty-four, it was eighteen, almost nineteen thousand. And then budgeted in twenty-five was ten, and we're proposing ten. Is that just sort of, again, it's winter-dependent on, of what, you know, the freeze thaw is doing to it, or?
So I budget in two different places. So I have capital projects for paving and and major capital projects, which is under the CIP. And then I have money in for Public Works projects, where they replace a driveway cove. Or they do little projects in the street and have to pave them, or replace a catch base. And so this is really their small projects. And again, it's governed by failure of the infrastructure, so. And we prioritize and try to, some years, I have no choice to run that over, because it has to be fixed. And other years, you know, we didn't have a lot going on.
I have a question. So remember, I don't know if it was last year or the year before, but we had the meeting with, a neighborhood meeting with the folks on Hedgerow about the speed, because people were using Valhalla as the throughway. And we put in the speed bumps, and we, I think, extended the, the striping. You're laughing, I see, I see you, Bill, I see you. Is that, one, has that been successful? And two, would a budget item like that, did that, does that, would that be reflected here, or would that be reflected in the CIP? And do we, or was that a Public Works project, or was that something that we contracted out?
It was a paving company that I'm in.
Okay.
But the, the striping and, and striping, those speed bumps would fall under your striping and crosswalks.
Okay.
As for how it's working, I think Bill would probably know better than I would.
To tell you the truth, the, Bill was going to go back if there was a complaint once they got done. The guy, the contractor was supposed to come back and put an extra hump on it.
Yep. It didn't happen.
So it's barely, it's not even, I mean, it didn't slow anything down until you get to the middle of it. But we're still getting the big trucks, we're still getting all this stuff going. I mean, nobody pays attention to it, so. Yeah, we still get the Cisco stuff, we still get all the.
Okay, okay.
They're not going fast, so I mean, this.
But still, it's a headache.
Yes, you take the speed bumps out because they.
Thank you.
Matt, can we just plan to circle back on that? And then I think at a council meeting, and then you said you had more questions?
Yeah, just some like the, there's no increase for the iron and steel, but it says increase due to steel prices and tariffs? Are we just saving, finding savings other places with the expected increases for the, the cost of steel?
Right, but we do have some in stockpile. We took that into consideration, whether I would really need to increase that to buy more. It's really a year-to-year. Sometimes we get close to over-expending it, and other times we don't, and we stockpile from, from previous years.
And then for, and this might be something that we need to talk about at a, a actual council meeting, so to right now, but can we look at putting a crosswalk, a flashing crosswalk at Route Nine and Carrollane? Because you come around Route Nine out of Yarmouth, that turn, Greeley Road, and there's a flashing crosswalk there, it's great and wonderful, it alerts you for either direction. People are obviously following the speed limit. And then you hit the crosswalk at Route Nine and Carroll, and there's, there's nothing. There's just the speed limit sign. And I've seen kids, you know, go across and, you know, almost get hit kind of thing, because there's nothing for them, for anybody to really alert, like, hey, like, there's a crosswalk here.
I can write that down and get that priced out.
All right, thank you.
Can you explain the water usage to me, Chris?
We have a, a wash bay now.
It's a, seems like it's a tremendous amount of water.
It's, it's for the wash bay, for, we have it, it's written in when we did the addition on the building. So it's actually running our trucks through it, and buses, and police cruisers, and fire trucks. They're all going through the wash bay. It's really an undercarriage wash, to try to get the salt and everything off the frames, so we don't have the issues we've had for years while our trucks rusting out. And that's why we put that in.
So we're talking about rusting them out. Are we, are we spraying them with used motor oil or something like that?
We haven't had to since we put this in.
Not be environmentally safe. Fluid film, Bob, fluid film.
We used to fluid film them, but we don't anymore.
We're not, we're not using fluid film?
No, because I've been, we've been looking at the trucks, and after each storm, they go through the bays, plus they use a, a fire hose to rinse them down. And we're not really seeing any, any effects of rust on, on our large vehicles with this, with this wash bay. So we haven't spent the money to fluid film them.
Ronald Kopp.
I can tell you how to save fifty to seventy-five thousand dollars on this budget.
Tell us now.
Yes.
I'm not quitting.
Any vehicle that is a one-ton or smaller, do not buy it with a diesel engine. You've got two trucks over to Pape Chabale right now, because I towed them both over there. They're both diesels, neither one will run. One needs a turbocharger, the other one needs transmission cooler lines. If either one of those trucks were gas motors, you would have a zero bill. The maintenance on these diesel one-tons is, Steve Goggins was a stickler on, had to have diesels. I knew ambulance, who I was in charge of ordering, has a gas motor because of maintenance. You can trim fifty thousand dollars off from this budget by getting rid of those small diesel trucks. You just bought a new half-ton diesel pickup for the mechanic to ride around in, which was senseless, because it costs ten thousand dollars more than one with a gas motor. And it's, I mean, I'm a car guru, and I'm not just saying this. The pickup I drive is a gas motor. Every oil change on a diesel is two hundred and fifty, three hundred bucks, seventy-five dollars on a gas job. No fuel filter to change. The fuel mileage on a gas job is equal to a diesel now. It's just, it's senseless to buy a one-ton or a smaller truck with a diesel engine in it. Absolutely.
Is there any?
Where were you?
I've been here for eighteen, I've been here for eighteen ye, eighteen and a half years now. But I mean, and I just, if you home Google one-ton with a gas motor, and then Google one-ton with a diesel motor, it's ten thousand dollars difference, purchase price. The maintenance over a ten-year period is another ten thousand dollars more.
Is there, where are we at in the financing of that? Is it worth exploring doing a trade-in if it's, if we're truly having that, no?
You don't get any more money, nobody wants a diesel with a hundred thousand miles on it.
Okay.
Because the ash can in your exhaust system is defunct.
People used to buy the diesels because there was a significant cost savings in the fuel, but actually, cost, it's, the diesel cost, diesel fuel is more expensive than the gasoline.
The emissions on a diesel engine now are just killing the industry. I mean, I tow more new stuff than I do old stuff. An old diesel truck will run forever, but a new one will not. I mean, they go into limp mode every thirty thousand miles, and then you have to be towed. Eighty percent of my tow is on new vehicles. I mean, and, and I'm just being brutally honest. I mean, the purchase price alone, and then the maintenance on these vehicles, you'll save exuberant amount of money.
Should we be increasing our capital outlay in anticipation of replacement, replacements of those, knowing they have a hundred thousand miles on them?
They're already in. Actually, I just replaced a one-ton, and it's a gas.
Okay.
I've got another one in the CIP this year to be replaced, which will also be a gas.
Okay.
Ron's already yelled.
We should drive them until the wheels fall off.
And, I mean.
I would agree, Bob. We should be driving any, everything until the wheels fall off.
And that's what we do.
But don't go buy a new truck just because that's a diesel, you want to get rid of it.
They do, but the problem is the wheels fall off prematurely.
Well, I have one that's just about to fall apart. I don't think anyone's going to want it.
I, I made my husband drive our two thousand and one Toyota Camry until two years ago. I was committed.
Don't look at what I'm driving on the doyad, you'll all laugh, so.
You've got to commit to the wheels fall off.
Mine's an oh-seven, so.
I love it.
All right, moving on. Did you have more questions?
Denise.
I have one. On the road salt page, it's talking about the average, the three-year average. And then there's a line that says innovative for fourteen thousand. What is that?
That's the brine.
Okay, cool, I figured. It is innovative.
Can we replace it to say brine for future reference? Or is that too specific for a line item?
I have one more.
Uh, yeah, Bob.
Contractor services, snow plowing, twenty twenty-three was twenty-three thousand, and twenty-six is forty thousand. Are we contracting for more, or are we just, that's a cost increase?
It's a cost increase.
And we putting this out to bid? Or we just, nobody wants to do it?
No one wants to do it. We put it out to bid, the first time we had two bidders. The second time, we only, we had one, and it was the same, it was A.H. Grover. And when we put it back out next year, I, I don't know if they're going to be interested, so.
Is it because we don't have the manpower of the trucks?
That was when, years back, we started to move towards using contracted services. And a lot of towns were moving towards having contracted services do the plow routes. And then a lot of these private companies parked the, parked the trucks because they weren't making money, and left towns high and dry. So we kind of moved away from that, but we've kept this one, because we have a good relationship with A.H. Grover. And I would need to hire another person if we took over that route again.
So one of the things that I've always noticed is Route Nine going from Cumberland to Falmouth. You know, the Cumberland stretch is always bare. And the minute I hit Falmouth, it's, it's got three inches of snow on it. Is there, is there, is there ways for us to manage the routes with Yarmouth and Falmouth so that we get better, better results for, by us taking, taking Route Nine right down to Rotary? And, and Yarmouth taking something Greeley Road, or, or, you know, Falmouth taking Blackstrap right to Cop Motors? Is there ways for us to?
You know, with the, with the hiring challenges all these towns are having, I think this is going to be more of a conversation moving forward. Yarmouth has had three openings for about six months. Falmouth had quite a few, I'm not sure how they filled them. And, and we have three openings, well, actually two, because I was able to fill one.
One, one town could take care of Route eighty-eight, you know. I'm just, I think those conversations need to happen. We talk about regionalization and combined services, and Public Works should be one of those areas of.
Matt and I have had this conversation. In fact, I brought it up to him and said, you know, I think I'm going to start having these conversations, because I think Public Works is starting to get to where, you know, police and fire are. There's just, it's, we have more roads, we have more things to do, but the bodies just aren't there. And we're not getting applications for our three positions, or two positions now, but.
And the same thing with, with, you know, specialized equipment, excavators. We should be looking at the towns around us and saying, maybe we don't buy an excavator, we combine, and we all commit to, you know, you get the bulldozer, I get the excavator, you get the road grader.
Keep plugging.
This is probably a really stupid question, but does the state not plow? Like, they don't do Route Nine, and it's a state route?
We, we had these roads turned over to us two years ago. The only ones the state plows are Route one hundred and Route one.
Why? Were they just like?
Our population grew, and we became.
Urban compact. Yeah, yeah, it's popu, it's population-based. So once you, once your population density hurt in a certain segment of road.
Yeah.
Hits a certain number, then they turn it over through the urban compact, and then they turn that road over to the town. And you generally, and I, I will say, this town has been very well-served by Mr. Shane when it came to making sure that you weren't inheriting a pig in a poke. If you want to, if you ever want to understand a study in urban compact, drive Blackstrap Road from the Cumberland Line to the Portland Line, and you can tell which section is owned by Falmouth, and which section is owned by the state. The section that has no shoulder and the pavement is in really bad shape isn't owned by Falmouth.
Got it.
So that's, that's, yeah, so that's kind of, I mean, if you want to see, there's the best example regionally you can see.
The state of Maine turns around just below Smith Farms on Route one hundred. You'll see them turning around right there, and that's where they stop. Then the town of Falmouth takes over from the head of the Portland Line.
Quick question, really quick, Denise, and then we'll go to you. Street signs, are we, a quick question from a logistical perspective. When someone for, in the case of Chase's Pit, is building something, are they responsible for the street signs initially? And were replacement, or are we responsible for that? Who's paying for that?
We have the contractors pay for the signs. And then if we accept the road, then we replace them moving forward.
And then in the case of radios, just from my knowledge, across like our whole operation, is that, when you see a radio charge, are we paying some sort of service fee? Or is that for, for equipment replacement?
It's, it's really replacement and repair.
Okay, thank you. Denise?
Good to hear that you filled one of those positions. I'm curious, are our rates, you know, standard with other towns? Is something that we're not getting applicants, because we're on the lower end? And on the job ad, is the pay public? So people know what they're signing up for? Because I know a lot of. Because I know a lot of times nowadays, like you're, you expect to see the, you know, the salary range before you apply. And if you don't see it, you might not even bother applying, so.
We do have this alley range in there.
Okay.
And we just negotiated the contract with Public Works and we're at the average or if not, a little bit above the average. And we have a lot of incentives. So we might be at the average, but if someone wants to improve themselves and get different certifications or a different pay adjustments for that. So it really isn't a pay thing. So I'm not really sure what it is.
Yeah, all right, thanks.
And one of the problems with trying to hire people for this job is it's not a nine-to-five job. And you're on call all went along. It's very hard. I mean, I'm in the same business. It's very hard to hire somebody that wants to work seven days a week, you know, and work 36 hours straight. So it's tough.
To that, yeah, I think our rates are competitive. Somewhat familiar with a lot of different scales that they have. But you'll notice Yarmouth has this big sign right up on Route 1. Now advertising, Falmouth has had it for two years now, looking for opportunities to do. Equipment operators are tough, tough to find. If oftentimes, you know, we're competing with Shaw Brothers, we're competing with Gorham Sand and Gravel, we're competing with A.H. Grover, Story Brothers, all those, you know, equipment operators are more and more scarce. And as Chris has said, to a lot of the smaller operators, you know, years ago you had Osgood, you had Stone. Every town had a collection of three to five different smaller operators. You could find a contract to do some of that plowing or supplement. And then you could find some turnover that they'd find, well, they got tired of working for this person, so they go to work for the town. You could do that. But it's a, it's a challenging environment when it comes to that. And as Councilor Kopp said, part of it's, you know, is that unpredictability of not being nine-to-five type of job. It's, you know, awesome overtime, but overtime isn't as attractive as it may have been when we were all growing up. So, yep.
It's overtime.
The problem is you have three wealthy communities too. And so you don't have that pool of labor that you might have, like, you know, get out of, get out of this, you know, radius of Poland area and your pool of labor probably increases dramatically.
Yeah, yep, it does.
So real hopefully quick question. I might have missed this earlier, so if you already addressed it, I apologize. With the lubricating supplies, last two years, the actuals were around 7,500. And we're budgeting 6,500 this year, the same as the budget for FY '25. Are we just better at lubricating things and making them last longer? Or why are we, I'm glad that we're under, just is that realistic given the actuals from the previous two, you know, years of actuals?
It really depends on how much, how much we have on hand. I mean, if we, if we buy a 50-gallon drum of oil, does it, you know, how long does it last? Or if we have to buy more in a given year, it can fluctuate up and down. It's just, we've got a list on there of all the different lubricating supplies that we purchase. Sometimes the price goes up, sometimes we're not using it, we're not using it as much. Not sure if I answered your question.
A little bit, and that sort of brings sort of the next question of, you know, we're budgeting 6,500 and then, you know, we've got this list down here that totals 10,000. And just like, what's the connection?
I just put the cost, what it would actually cost if we went through and purchased all of that in, you know, one whole swoop.
As opposed to we have some from last year?
Correct.
Okay.
You're talking about lubricating supplies.
Yeah.
A lot of new vehicles don't come with grease fittings, believe it or not. I mean, they've done away with them. They come with Teflon or nylon bushings and some of the equipment's the same way. So pretty much a grease gun is non-existent in a, in just a car shop anymore because nothing has grease fittings anymore, so.
It's cardboard plows.
Designed to fail.
That's why those wheel bearings have a 85,000 mile life.
If you're lucky.
Overall, I just want to flag on this budget. Nice job, Chris. Wait, 4% increase?
We can cut that down, $2,000 for membership dues.
I'd have nothing to do.
I think that's amazing.
Who is in charge of this budget?
Chris.
Chris's baby. Chris's baby.
Danny Burr.
Does anyone have any other questions on Public Works?
Just the comment that I already said before, but I really appreciate you putting in red everything that accounted for those increases. Super helpful, like, I'm, I'm left with basically no questions, which I think is how it should be.
Phil Stiles, you know we don't take questions from the public. Do comment.
He's been saying this for 18 years.
Rumor has it, you've been saying this by 18, for 18 years.
Don't forget where the salt shed lies on Stiles Way.
Thank you for your comments. All right, we're going to move on to solid waste, 320. Actually, we're at five minutes or seven minutes. And I would rather give this the time that it needs all in one session.
That's good, I've got two dogs in the car.
Oh, my God.
Okay, Bob.
I let them out.
They're home, they're home now.
They're probably in the kitchen here.
You see, I was looking for them.
Just as a follow-up, if, I will send an email around, but if you could circulate any questions you guys have as it relates to the fire cost center before the end of day tomorrow, so we can give Helene and Matt adequate time to review those prior to our next meeting. As a reminder, all questions will be posted on the budget landing page of the Cumberland Maine website for you to look back at any questions. And our next meeting is scheduled for Monday, March 24th at 5:00 PM. Anything else right now, guys?
You're doing a great job.
Yeah, you are. Thanks, Bob.
Yes. I noticed we got an email about discontinuing curbside. Can that go on to the Q and A as well as, yes, it has been, but in the budget, we budgeted for the, you know, the whatever.
I will respond to that person. So I had a busy workday.
Oh, I wasn't going there.
Whitney, did you catch that? Just for everyone at home, we received a question via our general inbox about the discontinuation of bulky item pickup, which will also be a topic of conversation as we get to that segment of budget. Thank you. Meeting adjourned.
Bigger trash talk, dialogues.
Oh, I'm sure.